Here.
Mr. Hoff. Mrs. McGinnis. Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Cook.
Okay, we have a number of special presentations. The first is about the elementary social studies curriculum.
Good evening, everybody. We just have three brief presentations this evening. The first about our elementary social studies curriculum. We're going to give you an update on our safety and security plan and some personnel. Ongoings that have been happening over the past month or so, and then also talk to you about the community eligibility provision. And how, you know, that's been rolled out and the success that we've seen with that. And if we do have an additional few minutes. I did want to bring your attention to some PDE legislation that just came out within the last couple of days. It does impact the district. Again, we should be relatively brief tonight. The plan is for beginning in October, starting our complete review of finances, starting with an analysis. Of our ESSR funding and grant funding and looking at re- reemerging this planned funding back into the budget for the upcoming school year. So we'll begin that process starting in October. So at this time, I'll turn things over to Mrs. Flegel to give us a brief presentation on elementary social studies.
Good evening, everyone. I did sit at your table, a brief timeline of how we worked through the process for social studies. In addition, there is a pack there that we were given, an activity pack sampler with varying grades. For you to be able to take a look at some of the samples. We also have over here a third grade sample of the teacher edition, the workbooks. We have for all of the grades back at our office. Certainly, you're welcome at any time. You know, I'd be happy to set up time for you to come look at those samples if it's something that you're interested in. Several years ago, we started with surveying teachers to create curriculum teams that would review various curriculums. With different grade levels, content areas and departments. So that started, you know, even prior to myself. But I did go back. There was a survey done in the fall of twenty one where we were looking at the specific elementary areas that we're going to be talking about. We did have twenty-three teachers respond for varying content areas. And then the process of that review started in the spring of twenty twenty-two. I know we had some discussions at our education committee and we also started reviewing our current materials and the materials we previously had. The the copyright of the previous book that we had utilized was a nineteen eighty-five copyright for for our elementary K to six social studies at that time. We did transition a few years ago to Studies Weekly, which was a magazine-based. Tool that teachers were using. K to two, it was very cumbersome for difficult for children to read. So K to two had created their own units at that time to get us through as we were adopting the ELA, the math and the different curriculums that we had put in place. But Studies Weekly was then utilized for our grades three to five. With this team, we did have teams come together to look at both science and social studies in January of twenty-three. We had eight teachers that participated K to five. That is open to all of our teachers. As we send out those surveys, we welcome anybody to be part of that. Along with our administrative team as well. So they certainly can give input on to those adoptions. The options that we reviewed in the different samples, we looked at Savis My World, which is what is being recommended. We had McGraw-Hill Impact Social Studies, and then we did a review of Studies Weekly again because there was a new addition. To that tool that we were previously using. Throughout that time, the teachers take a look at several factors. They're looking at alignment to the PA standards. They're looking at ease of use for teacher. They're looking at ease of use for student. And all of the materials that come along with that and what that will provide us. So there is a criteria sheet that our teachers fill out where they rank and rate each of those tools that we looked at with the samples. We did have reps come in and do presentations for that teacher group so that they could highlight. The different hard copy, consumables and online tools that would be accessible and available to our teachers. So after that process and after going through all of that, we did. Land on with a teacher vote for the Savis My World program. It would be a four-year agreement. That would be not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand for those materials. As you can see, with that, we're getting the teacher edition, the student edition. There are leveled readers that come along with that set for each grade level. So the students are able to have varying. Reading levels with the specific social studies content topics. There are activity guides for the teachers and there's an online platform as well. Several of the things that the teachers had highlighted and liked about that program was the alignment to the PA standards. To make sure that we are aligned with what Pennsylvania is expecting us to teach in regard to social studies. There's also a focus on literacy, the Pennsylvania specific content, and also the inquiry-based learning pieces that that come along with that. So in your packet, you'll see a highlight of all of that and then also an outline of each of the chapters by grade of the materials that we selected. Any questions? Let me get back here. Hold on one second. They have them, and I believe with this one, it was the color code. So that the children aren't aware. So if you look at the backs, they're different colors. So different ones have different levels. We have, depending on the leveling system that's utilized. We level all of our books using Heinemann. So typically what's happening, we have a book leveling online. So we're able to put in the information for the text and then correlate that with what it is that we're using. We try to keep everything on the same reading level. Nick and I were actually just looking at an AI tool that said they would adapt anything. To a specific reading level. So we we put in a paragraph and said, make this a kindergarten reading level. I can tell you. It was nowhere near what a typical kindergarten child would be reading. So we try to keep everything in line with that same reading level. So the same thing would be done with these, but they are adapted by color. Because you don't want children to know, I have the lower level, I have the higher level within the classroom. It it does have a textbook with it. Yeah, it is the online portion. And typically what the. Providers do is throw in the textbook for free with the online. So there is a consumable workbook that goes along with it. There's also a teacher's manual, but then there's also the online portion as well. Yeah, absolutely. And that that would be our plan. We do sometimes after we get through and see. You know, there are times that we see in our kindergarten team liked this one specifically because some of them are way above level. You know, I talked about Studies Weekly at the beginning. We started purchasing that for everybody. And the kindergarten team came back and said, whoa, this is way above what our kids can read. So certainly, we're going to take input from our teachers throughout this implementation. And if there are recommendations moving forward that we need to make adjustment, we would do that with future agreements. But at this point, our plan would be to have those.
During my day, we tried to look at ways to integrate curriculum, particularly the literacy component. And here, you know, you teach literacy no matter what the subject content is. And I see this material does that for us. And I think that's really commendable that we'd be looking at that, doing that.
So when we do an analysis of our performance in our upper levels, one of the biggest biggest weakness areas that we have. Is constructive responses, especially in looking at nonfiction. So when we focus on elementary and middle school, social studies and science, we're looking very heavily at that ELA piece. Because the more that we can read and write in nonfiction, the stronger our kids tend to be. Anytime we're looking at doing prompt response, those types of things in our classes, we're usually utilizing. A nonfiction text, a nonfiction prompt that would go along with it. So this this ties directly in. I think it brings a lot of continuity to our overall curriculum. So if you look at the back of this sheet, this gives you the topic areas by grade level that are covered. And it plays very nicely into it. It goes through each grade level, what the chapter breakdown is. And you're going to see a nice mix of some history. You're going to see community. You're going to see some geography. You're going to see all of those pieces that we will move into standalone classes in secondary where we have basically a history from. Movement to the United States through the Civil War. And then we move into geography and world geography. And then we do. Okay, history from the Civil War through modern times. And then that builds right into our high school curriculum where we have a year of civics. Then we go through our, you know, world history, American history, and then multiple electives that build on that as well. What makes social studies is unique is that we currently don't have a state assessment. For social studies. When we're looking at curriculum alignment, we're looking at state standards alignment. You always have to be kind of forward thinking that when are we going to get that assessment that may come down the road? And what might it look like? Because it's such an expansive content area that really evaluating anything on a state standardized type test would be very difficult. The one assessment that we do give and are required to give is we give a citizenship test at the end of ninth grade. And we do report out to that. We do it at the end of civics. So it's about a, I want to say a thirty thirty question test. Multiple choice that we've taken the, basically the American citizenship test and we've modified it to include a lot of our civics content. So that is really the only required assessment that we that we give and then report out on. However, we're constantly kind of keeping that in the back of our mind, what 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 could come? And then obviously, doing well in these areas, as Dr. Lloyd alluded to, with the reading and writing piece, that can only help us. In our ELA, our literature, PSA keystone moving through. So the more that we're helping kids become. Good consumers of reading text and then obviously producers of writing text, the more strong they're going to be, no matter what field they decide to go into.
So I hit the QR code and went to look at some of the topics. The problem I have is some of the rankings, it's like unnecessary, like the ten greatest threats to earth, the ten greatest presidents. And whose judgment, like it's pretty, you know, it's pretty subjective. And who are relying on the authors, the publishers? That, I mean. Numerous topics are rankings that I I don't think we should impose on kids like this to say. Here's the the ten greatest threats to earth. And I don't even know what they, how they're listed, but. I just, I don't think we need to do that. We could teach these subjects without ranking stuff and already sort of building in a kid's minds what. These publishers think are the ten greatest threats to earth or who the ten greatest presidents are. I'm curious to see what the rankings are in these. Modules, but that's the problem I have. It looks like great stuff. But I don't think you need to go to the lengths to rank things like that. Why can't you just describe ten presidents or eight presidents? Why do we have to rank the ten greatest?
So one of the things is, so look at the back of this. So one of the things that it does after giving its kind of list of, you know, great American symbols. It then asks the kids, so what do you think? You know, do you agree with the ranking? If so, why, why not? Based on your own research and reasoning, it's then helping them develop those reasoning and analytical skills to help evaluate that. So I think it's maybe giving a list that that could be modified. So give us your list, you know, here's a list of ten. But give us what your list might be and how might that be altered and kind of looking, and this is on symbols, but obviously. With, you know, what makes a great president, some people would think Kennedy was the greatest president of all time. Some people might think. That Obama was the greatest president of all time or Nixon, you know, depending on what your perspective is and what you know, what your priorities are. What generates conversations, I think, at a young time. I I think a lot, the concern a lot of times with social studies curriculum. Is that you're trying, that we want to avoid pushing opinions of various things on students, letting them develop. And obviously having that family piece to where their conversations are at home, but presenting them with information, letting them synthesize and analyze. And really make judgments for themselves and then articulate that. So it's. Anything that generates conversation, in my opinion, is usually a good thing. Having taught biology with all the controversial topics in biology. You know, I live that every day and looking at different things, especially we were, I was teaching in the age of genetics and genetic research and they were discovering the human genome and. All of the different pieces that came with genetic engineering and the morality of it, and that still exists today. But obviously, there's different pieces, whether it be evolution or, you know, different things that. We look at, you know, what is, what is information that's out there that's supported by research, by data? And then asking kids, okay, you know, formulate your own opinion and then support it with with evidence, you know, why do you feel the way that you do? So I think anything that gets kids thinking is a good thing.
I don't disagree. The only, the only problem with that is you're already putting, you're already giving them ten.
I get it. I get it.
I'd like them to explore themselves and arrive at a conclusion, like what do you think makes a good president? Or what do you think are the elements to? That threaten the environment or whatever and allow them, but to 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 give them ten. Out of the gate.
Sure.
Well, then I agree with Brad too. You need things that will stimulate thought. Thinking of a real good friend of mine's son when he was in elementary school. He was asked why Abe Lincoln was called honest state. His response was because he was Republican. And it's something I'll, you know, we tease this guy about this all the time, but. I I think things that do stimulate thought are great. I I think if the material does try to. Promote a particular agenda, it's very wrong. And I think most teachers would use this to expound upon, okay, here, here's why these people were considered presidents. Why do you think a president would be called great? What could they do to be considered to be good? You know, just expand the conversation and and most teachers will do that. I would say vast, vast majority will expand the idea. Additional thoughts, Paul?
Or even take a topic like this and start your lesson off with. Think about, here's what an American symbol could be. Here's some possible. Give us your list. And then after we then explore and go through, okay, now that you've seen what the publisher is saying, these are some shining examples of great American symbols. Would you modify your list? Would you, you know, how does your list compare to their list? You know, doing those kind of skills where you're comparing and contrasting can be a definite, you know, a great way to do that. Again, I think these are, no matter what curriculum we look at or purchase, especially when you look at social studies. You know, they're they're going to have content that may, I don't want to say influence, but but it's providing information to consider. But, you know, it's at the end of the day, I think, you know, when we look at what we're trying to do with curriculum is provide. Vigorating, you know, engaging content that can motivate student learning. And there are some kids that love social studies and will eat it up. They love government economics history. And there's kids who just think it is, it's like watching the paint dry. So we got to find a way to kind of hit both ends. And, you know, try to motivate them, whether it be with digital content and or print content. But then ultimately, I mean, the teacher in the classroom that is that is promoting the conversation and driving the instruction. Is going to be the key force and all of that. So one thing I like about all of these is it's directly aligned to the state standards. So when we look at what we should be teaching, it does align very closely with state standards. And it does incorporate a Pennsylvania history piece, which I think is very important because a lot of that gets glossed over. And our kids don't necessarily get that to understand how Pennsylvania came to be. So I think that's an important piece as well. The development of our state and kind of how those pieces all tie together with the development of our country. So there's a lot of, I mean, it's very interesting. I love social studies. So it's. It's a fun topic for me to explore.
I'll be honest, I'll be curious to see these rankings. Because let's face it, it'll, it'll, either, either way, it'll be, I'm sure it will be controversial either way. And listen, I'm not ashamed to say I'm an independent, but you talk about the ten greatest presidents, you don't think that could. Stir up some stuff. It's unfortunate that it that it does, but but that's, that's the world we live in. You know, climate stuff is very controversial and kids should discuss this stuff. But my point is, we should let, allow them to arrive at their own conclusions and not lead them with. Lists already given to them. It's hard for a kid to 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 pick against a list that's been, I'd be, I would argue that there probably weren't. Weren't ten great presidents. It might be six, so.
Well, and that's something with this, there would be professional learning for our staff to be able to work through. As they're learning to implement with these pieces, which certainly something that we would want to reiterate. You know, it does go back to being able to support whatever it is your decision with with that evidence. So we're stressing that with everything we're doing within ELA, even within our math classrooms, being able to support how you got your answer. As you're working through. So being able to provide evidence for your reasoning behind those things. So that's certainly something that we can reiterate. As teachers are going through that professional learning and implementation as well.
Publishers to show us how they arrive that these.
I can certainly ask, yes. I have three questions. I guess my first one, I'll start with an easier one. So the three hundred and fifty thousand for the four-year. Does that a lot enough money to get the teachers the reusable workbooks every year for every grade? I just want to make sure that we're not going to have it for one year and then teachers aren't going to have what they need for the remaining time.
That's correct. That's the entire price.
Okay, and that will be, that will get every grade their workbooks every year. Okay, and then. My second one was, and that price will also include all digital access for like FID days and things like that. So we'll be able to do that.
It gives them full online access as well.
Okay, and then I guess my my third question slash concern is that eight teachers participated K to five. So did we represent every school?
Oh, sorry, it was offered. We did not have every school represented in that group, so, but it was open to every school to participate.
Okay, I I just have concerns with that. I'm just thinking eight teachers. We have eight element, like K to five, eight buildings. And what a teacher thinks in one building in kindergarten is going to be different. Like, did they, did they collaborate with their colleagues to say?
They did. I mean, we had the opportunity to be able to go back and share with teams so that they could. Get get input and encourage to get input. Certainly, the time of year, different times, you know, and different people have different things happening. So we open it up to everybody. And certainly, sometimes we get more participation than others with that. We did have a nice range from each of our buildings. So we did see from from our McCalla Heights building to Ebner. You know, we we saw a range of teachers from each of the buildings, but again, not every building was represented with every grade.
I'm concerned, I just feel like eight is not very many for, you know, K to five across eight buildings and doing that math just tells me that not very many people are having a say in it. And I guess I have some concerns with that.
Again, it's it's open and and some people, I have to tell you, our ELA, our math, even writing. Those are more popular, I would say, to participate. We did not get as much participation with the social studies. Science was more than social studies. And again, is that because of the content? Not certain, but we did, we do get more participation. Social studies did not get as much.
What do you see the balance being between like the consumable versus the digital activities?
You mean balance within the instructional day? You know what? It's going to vary, you know, as we as we go through the training, each of the lessons does tie to a consumable piece within the workbook. So as you're looking at the lessons throughout the chapter, there are consumable pieces. It has never been a requirement for us that every teacher has to use the same amount of consumable versus the tech components. That's something that we really let up to the instructional decision-making of the teacher to be able to work through. Some of our teachers have kids. And link right to their Google classrooms in three to five and will create Google forms and different ways to submit and turn in. And we would encourage them to do so, where we have others that are using more hard copy and using that workbook and those pieces. So in year one, we would, of course, go in with the training, work through all those components with our staff. And we meet a lot as grade levels throughout professional learning and in-service days to have discussions as grade levels. So after that training, through year one and implementation, we would go through having teachers take good notes, having discussion. And then bring those grade level teams back together to make sure that we're all on the same page about that instruction. And make sure that there's a balance of those components as well. But in year one, we really like to let teachers try things out. With the implementation and they have to be reflective of the learners in front of them. So whereas some classes need more of that hard copy, paper, pencil, and working through those components within the consumable workbook while others. Can really pick up the Chromebook and run with it.
I guess this reverts back to one of my previous questions from last year. What are, what have we come to with the Chromebooks? Like, will the kids be able to take them home this year? Because it seems if we're having a lot of digital interaction, that they need to be able to utilize it when they're at home.
We had surveyed our staff to be able to take a look if there was a need for that. And an overwhelming amount of our staff did not feel the need to be able to send home. You know, they felt that if the kids were working through, they're not sending an overwhelming amount of homework home. And anything that they were sending, they felt that they could send paper pencil to be able to complete without that Chromebook. That they were using those digital tools throughout the school day. So that was based on the result of of surveying the staff. Three to five, to be able to see if they were interested in sending those Chromebooks home. So.
What about parents? Like, are there any parents that want the Chromebook so that their kids can access this kind of stuff at home? I mean, it's just a question.
Yeah, I I don't know. I mean, we did not survey parents about whether the device would go home or not. Typically, that decision is made by the teacher. If the teacher feels they can send paper pencil homework home if need be. And all of our teachers, you know, like I said, we we had maybe a handful. I'd have to pull up the survey results to look back. But when we revisited that survey with Bryce and myself and the team. It was not overwhelming that our teachers wanted to be able to send those devices home. They felt that there's a time for paper and pencil that our kids could be working through. And then if they were sending homework, that was the avenue that they would do it through.
I guess my question is, we're spending a lot of money on these curriculums and some kids don't have the resources to access. The digital things at home. Not everybody has a computer at home or whatever. So I guess that like. Maybe we should survey the parents because there might be some of those higher level learners that want to be able to do more at home, regardless of whether it's assigned or not.
I I think one of the things that we've talked about is looking at, especially maybe in the second half of our fifth grade year. To help transition those students for when they do enter sixth grade and middle school, where it is very Chromebook and device heavy. They're expected to be taking that back and forth on a daily basis because the majority of the platforms are on Google Classroom. So they they don't have a choice. They have to access things that way, getting them acclimated to kind of that daily rigor of bringing Chromebooks back and forth. The age level of the student plays a role. You know, I will say that in terms of. Chromebook safety and things coming back and forth and traveling in a way that they're they're living their life. That they're lasting the full four years as opposed to, you know, a limited amount of time. I apologize. Hi Liz. You're okay. No problem. Okay, thank you. Liz just wants, she's on her way. She had an emergency, so she's, she's on her way here. But no, I mean, I think we, we definitely could look at that. I can tell you from the state, the state is pushing online testing. So they want us to be utilizing the digital piece more and more. I think from when we did, when COVID came around, we did an access survey of all of our parents and it was a very limited number of parents. Because we were providing hotspots at the time that didn't have access to to the internet at home. And I would say the majority of our students, if you ask them, would say that they have access to some level of device, whether it be a phone or a tablet. You know, maybe not a desktop or a laptop, but they do have access to something at home and they do have the ability to access online content. So leveraging what we get when we, because when we look at curriculums now, as Haley had mentioned, they don't even want to sell you a textbook. They want to sell you licensing.
That's kind of, I mean, I guess that's kind of why I'm thinking like, I understand like maybe kindergarten for a second, but like. By like third, fourth, fifth grade, I think we should be looking at transitioning them. I mean, and. It is their responsibility. I mean, they'd be signing, you know, the same information. And I mean, we gave them Chromebooks when they were home for COVID and most of them survived. So I just, I just feel like. I I don't know why we're withholding, like if we're purchasing those for our kids, why we're not letting them. Take them home and utilize them to their full potential, I guess.
Definitely, we can explore it. I mean, I think, like you had said, maybe the next step is to, you know, talking to our third, fourth and fifth grade parents. Definitely, we can explore it. I mean, I I think, like you had said, maybe the next step is to, you know, talking to our third, fourth and fifth grade parents to see what their comfort level would be. Or if there is a, there's a need or a request for kids to be able to have the vice, because we have them. I mean, we have devices for every kids. They're just maintained within the classroom in a carton or utilized, you know, on that basis. Um, they go home when they need to, but at this point, they're not going home every day, like the student doesn't take them home back and forth. But that's something we can definitely look at. We're still utilizing the iPads with the little kids, with the younger kids, the K K to twos. Um, but definitely, I mean, i- it's, we've kind of seen, we we've seen it go both ways. We've seen where we maybe are too digital. And we're too reliant on some of those pieces, those digital pieces, and kind of getting back to some more traditional. Paper pencil, especially when we're testing that way. The writing is what we see, because when kids are forced to take a, take a passage and then write. A response to that, to literally write it, not type it. Um, that becomes, that becomes a challenge for some kids. So there's value in that, but there's also value the other way as well. Um, you know, as Dr. Cam and E could allude to, with all of the the revolution in artificial intelligence and utilization of. You know, chat G P T and those types of 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 bots. Um, the dangers of, you know, what are out there, you know, digitally for kids is also there. But we've kind of taken the opposite stance where we want to, we want to take advantage of the capabilities. Let's look at what it can do and how can enhance enhance education? How can it individualize education? What can we do in the classroom? To really capitalize on on the technology that's now out there. So one of our emphasis this year from a technology standpoint. Is really introducing our teachers because the kids are way ahead of them right now in terms of artificial intelligence and utilizing that. How can we leverage and and I don't want to say control, but utilize it in a positive way as opposed to worrying about. All of the negative things with cheating and, you know, plagiarism and those kind of things. How can we utilize it as a tool? Because it's so powerful. Um, you know, in the classroom and what we could utilize it for. So and it's not going away. I mean, li- it it's going to be something that will continue to evolve. So it's it's not something that we can just say. Shut the door, let's, we we don't want to have anything to do with it. We're afraid of it. Like, we need to capitalize on it. So, um. Definitely, we can, we can look at, you know, three, three, four, five and start there.
I mean, I'm just thinking like at at our house, I only have one desktop at home. So if my kids weren't bringing their Chromebooks home. They don't, like, if I'm on the computer doing work, they can't be on it. Do you know what I mean? I mean, they have phones or whatever, but I'm just thinking back like when we started into COVID. Without their devices, we, you know, I mean, we we didn't, they couldn't all be on a computer because we didn't have enough.
Right. Well, and even, you know, if you, depending on your Wi-Fi access and you putting three, four, five devices on your Wi-Fi can can bog that down as well. So. Eh eh, the more that broadband expands and the more that people have regular access, I think that only benefits it. It's they're utilizing it more on a social level as opposed to, you know, for an academic purpose, but. There there's, there's good pieces to both of those. So we can definitely look at that. It's a good idea.
Anything else? Any other questions? Uh, this will be on the agenda.
Yes, it will be. We will be on the general.
Absolutely. Just let me know. We can have a room set up so that you're able to view.
I'm going to send you a link from Tom, too. I want you to take a look at. It's interesting. Hundred most influential people of all time.
I would, I would like to make a comment.
Sure, Dave.
Going back to what Val said, I I have to agree with him. And speaking as a history and government teacher. It's sometimes very difficult to teach just the facts and not sprinkle in a little bit of opinion. And I think that we we need, we need good materials that help us. Present the facts and teach students how to think, but not teach them what to think. So there there is definite value in that, but I I'm with Val on those rankings. Someone has put in their opinion. And which is fine, as long as someone says, this is this person's opinion.
Let's look then at the safety and security update.
Okay, Bill and his team and and the administrative team, I just spent a lot of time this summer. Um, trying to implement and put into place a lot of the different pieces that we had, uh, that we had part of the budget. Um, with increases and enhancements to our safety and security. Um, it's still a work in progress, eh, you know, as Bill's going to allude to. Uh, but I think just, you know, from the start of the school year, we've put some some pieces in place. And obviously, some of them are proprietary. We can't really discuss details in 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 a public meeting, but I want to assure you that. Uh, all of our plans have been comprehensively reviewed. All of our procedures and protocols are not only being reviewed but practiced. Um, and then at the end of the day, we are are taking some very significant steps to solidify and and ensure up. All of our safety and security within the district. So I'll turn things over to Bill and let him give you an update.
Good evening. Um, I promise to be real short here, so I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. Just want to go over some of the things that our department's doing and what we have done uh prior to the beginning of the school year. So as Mr. Hatch has alluded to, uh, right now, we are continuing to work and have security greeters armed at all of our elementary buildings. Currently, we have seven schools that will still need an armed security greeter. What I mean by that is we've had to implement and shift some people around, so we have all the buildings covered for now. So we have two of our full-time security officers at elementary and one of our part-time officers. That also handles the residency issues for all elementaries at one of the buildings. So with that, we're still continuing to to interview applicants and we're working very hard and diligently to get that completed. The problem is, oh, the hiring of the security greeters at all of our elementary schools has been a huge challenge and undertaking. Due to the certifications that the state mandates, you have to have what's called NASRO, which is uh falls under Act sixty seven. That is a forty-hour course, which NASRO stands for National Association of School Resource Officers. So anybody that's working as a security officer or a security greeter and his title so 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 to be. They have to require and complete this class before they can even work in a school. So that's been a very big challenge for us. Um, just to let you know, we are continuing to train. We held a three-day training back on July thirty first, August third and fourth with the alternate police department and myself. We coordinated. Uh, a three-day class for eight hours a day at the alternative junior high school. Uh, it was all an active shooter training and what's called Rescue Task Force Training, which stands for R T F. Uh, with that, we had Eltona Police, Logan Township, Bellwood Police, I had Eltona Fire. Uh, we had Spring Cove School District, Bellwood Police, and Bellwood School District came through. The Attorney General's Office, the Blair County District Attorney's Office, Blair County Juvenile Probation and Adult Probation. Um, so it was a a huge undertaking, but we had at least sixty people each day for the three days in the class. Uh, to come over and train on active shooter training and rescue task force and went throughout the junior high and did that. It was very well received and everybody that uh participated got a certificate in that. Uh, some of the other things that I turned out, um. We also conducted, the alternate school district police conducted a weapon filament uh in training on Monday, August twenty first for a total of six hours. To re um go over with our security greeters and staff just to become more familiar with their weapons and additional training before they qualified at the range. Um, and then also, um, we constantly, mi- myself as the director and our and our officers in the department. Regularly uh meet to discuss the state of the district and come up with solutions and ideas. On how to better serve the students and staff for the alternative school district when it comes to safety and security measures. Um, and lastly, uh, as you can follow. Uh, Mrs. Flegel and the administration and myself came up with scenarios uh before the beginning of the school. It was actually the day before the first day, August twenty fourth. We uh provided scenarios to each elementary school and all of our secondary schools. And there was about six or seven scenarios or a little bit more on each scenario. And the goal of that was to collaborate with each faculty member and team in each school. And all the scenarios I can tell you that we provided were all actual scenarios that happened in the last couple of years within the alternative school district. That may be coming from a weapon, that may be coming from the swatting call. That may be from encountering an irate parent coming to the building. That may be coming over a custody dispute. So all the things was to collaborate and and have a discussion with the team. And that was very well received and very well done. So I just wanted to give you a brief synopsis of what all we've been doing and continue to do. Um, we we are already up this school year. We just started. We're up to a hundred and one incidents that we've uh either responded to or investigated. And what I mean by that is that's not just all severe incidents. So we, we have a logging system. So when we turn into the Department of Ed. It shows of all the things that our department does, whether it's a ride home for a student that did not have transportation. It could mean a a fight, it could mean anything that we're dealing with. So we've had that many already this school year. We're very busy.
It just, just to piggyback on what Bill had talked about. So there's been some pretty significant movement in the legislature recently. Um, there's been Senate bills introduced uh to mandate and require Pennsylvania schools. To provide armed security officers at all times, including during extracurricular events. Uh, hopefully, it's it's again, it's one of the things we're well ahead of, but if there would be some funding attached to that. That would be a a significant, you know, a significant move. Um, you know, at the state level in terms of identifying the importance of having somebody at every building and making movement with that. So there's, there's discussion in the center right now. There's a couple of active bills that are out there, so I'm I'm going to be following that and and anxious to see where that goes. But it it does have promise. I met with Representative Schmidt last week and and we talked about a variety of things, but that was one of them. Um, and he's pretty confident that that is something that they're going to prioritize at the legislative level to try to get some movement on. So. That's a good thing. That's definitely a good thing.
And I just want to be, I'd be remiss if I did not thank the board and our administration for their support. Um, it's very common for other school districts to contact me directly or our departments. To ask what we're doing or what we have implemented or what we do, because we're sort of the. You know, figure out there that we're one of the biggest school districts and not just Blair County, but across the state. So we've had other school districts reach out. I've had Mar school district, I've had Plum school district. I've had Mount Lebanon School District Directors of their Safety and Security Department reach out. So some of the things, and it would not be without the board. Um, all the things you've done and given us. So we're well ahead of times. Uh, and what keeps me up at night is obviously, you know, we don't want to have another incident like we did. But we showed that we responded within reason and we did everything we possibly could. So thank you again. Is there any?
Bill and Andy and I are going to be presenting and Paula. Um, we're we're going to be one of two presenters uh in the next month to a a group of of school districts across the state. Administrators and their and their safety and security teams on how we, how we approached uh the swatting call in March. And then the debrief and then the follow-up from that and the interaction that we've had with the community and local law enforcement and the board. To help enact some different changes that we put in place. So again, thank you for your support on that. I think it's ma- it's making a big difference. One of the best feedback we've got from staff at the start of the school year was their their, how happy they were to see. That face at the building every day. And I know just from being to the buildings, um, it it does make a big difference. It does.
I got text messages from teachers thanking us for approving um the security greeters at the elementary schools, so.
It's, it's been a huge, it's been a huge upgrade.
I I can tell you, Kelly, um, the first day I was at almost every school, I visited each school, uh, all our elementary C and secondary. And particularly Baker, I spoke to a lot of the parents that were dropping off kids that day. And they were just, you know, overwhelmed with having an officer there. And it made them feel more secure and it made them feel much better with their kids going to school. And then there's somebody there to. You know, let people in and out where the principal and the secretary don't have to guess, you know, what what we tell our officers is we give what's called the eye test. So when somebody comes up and they don't look like they belong, then we, they normally don't. So, yeah, it's been overwhelming and thank you for the support. Yes.
Uh, Bill, I'm. Thank you for protecting the kids, making them safe in the school. You know, the students, administration, the teachers, us, thank you and keep up your.
You're welcome. I'm I'm very fortunate to have a great team surrounded by me and and I will tell you this, and I I feel. That I can share this with anybody in public or anywhere. When that day happened, when the swatting, our officers were one of the first into the building. Obviously, we were here. But we were one of the very first to go into the building and there's not one of us that won't put our lives on the line for any of our students or faculty, but thank you.
And that includes sporting events, too, football games.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Bill, thank you. I think the board has to remember that with an increased number of security officers, there's an increased cost. And we have to uh constantly monitor and make sure we have those funds available.
No, that's funny, Frank. You mentioned, you know, I had people come up to me and thank, thank us for the board for for raising taxes. Specifically for the elementary schools. You know, those were that voted for the budget and understood that, you know, we had to have a tax increase. And to to implement the el- the elementary security. So, yeah, that's, it was, it was well accepted within the community.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, the last presentation, and this will be very brief. Um, we were fortunate towards the end of August and and. Uh, Sue had worked on this for a number of months, worked very diligently about getting us approved for uh community eligibility provision. Which I'll let her explain, because I don't want to steal her thunder as to what that is. Uh, but she did an amazing job in bringing a huge benefit to our students and families. Here in the alternative school district. So I just want to give her an opportunity to give us an update on that.
So I just did a brief pack uh fact sheet here for you. I'm very excited about our preliminary res- preliminary results from this program. All of the kids in all of our buildings are eating for free. Um, our district-wide direct certification rate ended up with a sixty-five, just over sixty-five percent. For us to break even and get a hundred percent reimbursement for all of our kids and let all of our buildings participate. We needed sixty-two and a half. So we got more than enough to be able to allow all of our students to eat. During the application process, I had to project what I expected the increased participation to be. I projected a two to five percent increase in participation. Our numbers have blown that projection out of the water. We've had a sixty-three percent increase in breakfast participation. And over a ten percent increase in lunch participation. And funny enough, it's the kids that qualified for free meals. There's where the biggest increase in my numbers are, and it's our secondary kids. That's where our biggest increase in numbers are. So more and more kids are getting the food that they need to give them the attention span and the focus to learn better. So I'm very excited about all of this. Um, the, I I don't know what else to say other than I'm so excited. And our kids, and like Billy and Mr. Francis said. I've had parents reach out to me and say, this is saving me three to four hundred dollars a month. That you can't believe what this is doing to my budget. I've got four students that are in the elementary, in the school district. And just the amount of money it's saving them, the things it's doing for families is just phenomenal. So.
Do all school districts participate? Uh, like, are we in a, are we an exception or do other school districts in the area participate?
There, there's um Claysburg Kimmel participates in the program, which is the only local school that I'm aware of. There are a number of districts across the state. I don't know all of them, but it's not an overwhelming percentage.
Uh, yeah, I give you credit for for doing it. That's that's a pretty, pretty nice accomplishment you have.
Well, it it took us a while till the numbers got to where we needed to be so that we, it wasn't going to cost the district a lot of money. So we're finally there. This program allows us to continue this for four years. So you don't have to reapply for another four years. So we're in and we're covered for the for the foreseeable future.
You're on top of it. Congratulations.
Just to piggyback on that, Paula's not here, but Paula was able to work. She worked tirelessly to work to find a a location for mountain line backpack to continue. Yes, so they are uh they're partnering with the Up at Right School and they kind of have a permanent home up there and and kids are receiving meals and. Um, you know, for the weekend. So a lot of great things going on and thank you to you guys.
Great.
So that's all of the formal presentations. I didn't know. So one thing that came up late last week, um, just so you're aware, we do have a number of students that are impacted. P D E changed its policy in terms of how long students are permitted to attend school. So they're now allowed to attend school until they are twenty-two years of age. Um, so we had to go back and and examine any of our students that might still fit into that provision. Michelle, you want to comment real quick on what you've been doing the last two days, three days over the Labor Day weekend?
So we found out on Thursday morning that the uh P D E changed the age of eligibility for our students. And so instead of being twenty-one, it was twenty, it's twenty-two now. So students can stay in school until they're twenty-two years of age. And they told us Thursday, they gave us a webinar Thursday afternoon and we had to have it implemented by today. So, um, we have eight students um that we had to contact who had aged out by twenty-one. The past school year. Uh, so we were able to, I got it up onto our district website that night. And you can see all the information um on our special education department webpage. We called our parents or emailed them. I know some of them responded to email. Of the eight students, right now, we know that two are considering returning. Others needed to think about it because it impacts the funding that they were receiving for adult services. So we did have some students that didn't want to. So we did have some students that didn't want to reapply and go back to the adult services programs to return to school. It's a little different this time because they will, they will finish the day before their twenty-second birthday. So it's not like when they were twenty-one and they could stay through the entire school year. If a student would stay until they turn twenty-two, they'll be finished the the day before their birthday. Children with disabilities.
And and it is no additional funding. And probably nobody projected the additional cost.
No, but we can claim them on the December first child count. So we'll be able to do that. Probably one of the more difficult tasks is going to be staying within the four-year age differential in secondary. So I'm only allowed to have four-year age span between students in a class. So now we've added on more time, so.
Was this, was this just a, was this passed by the legislature, or was this just the new administration imposed this?
What we're gathering, it was a settlement. Other states are running into the same issue that IDEA allows up to twenty-two years of age. Pennsylvania was allowing twenty-one through even the end of the summer program and then adult services. So I'm I'm pretty sure it was coming from litigation and settlement agreements. Yeah, we'll see in the future. Most of the time, the students that take advantage of staying until they're, until they're twenty-one are usually churned with more significant disabilities and are full-time autistic support, MDS, life skills programs. And so it will allow them to stay a little longer. And hopefully, it gives families a little more time to be prepared for transition and and beyond their school years. But it will impact us this year, next year, moving forward.
On that webinar, did they mention whether those students would be eligible to, for basic ed subsidy in our child count?
We can claim them.
Even though Pennsylvania law ends at twenty-one, are they changing, did they say they're gonna change the law?
Dr. Clancy said that we would be able to put them on our October first count or December first count or Act sixteen, that we could include them. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Michelle. Okay, that's all the items on the agenda. Does anybody have anything else?
Just one last thing. I'd sent on an email for the September eighteenth board meeting. Would anyone oppose to starting that meeting at six-thirty? We do have a home boy soccer game that night at seven-thirty against Holliesburg. Would like to have the opportunity to get there if we can. If we don't, we don't. But would anyone object to moving the the actual vote, the general meeting starting at six-thirty? Okay, we will make that change and get it advertised. Exec will be, well, I think we can get away with exec for half an hour. I think we still do six. Six to six-thirty. It'll be, it'll be brief. There's one item I want to talk to you, like, go over. It was a real estate issue.
So all the items on the agenda?
Okay. All right, thank you.
All the items on.